Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, March 7th, 2017. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Okaberg.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
All rise and join me in the much of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everyone for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone to the council meeting tonight. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, there are no changes or additions. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent Svenby to approve the agenda, second by Nate.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First thing on the item is one point, on the agenda is item 1.3, public hearings. It's 1.3.1, establishment of development district eight and tax increment financing district number eight dash one, and we'll go to Troy for this.
Good evening. Tax increment financing has been requested for a project at 201 18th Street Southwest. It's a 37-unit market rate rental apartment building. It's located on 1.43 acres, currently is a vacant nursing home. It's substandard in condition, and really, to make this project possible, assistance is being requested in order to do the demolition. There's a lot of asbestos in that building, so that would be removed, the property, the building would be demolished, and then soils correction is done, just to get it to a level site in order for them to construct the apartment building. It would be a pay-as-you-go, tax increment financing district, so what that means is, as they pay their taxes, the increment in the taxes gained from the new project over what's there existing would be applied to the project and reimbursed back to the developer over the length of the TIF district. We have it set up for, the maximum amount for a redevelopment TIF is 25 years, and we have it set up that way in the plan, although it is estimated the site improvement cost would be around $400,000. So it's estimated that the length would run about 13 years and possibly less. So it's setting the cap at those items that are specified in here, which is demolition, asbestos removal, and soils corrections. Once they've been reimbursed for those costs, then the district would end. So you have two resolutions, one establishing the TIF district, which is just that site, and then also a resolution approving the use of tax increment financing for this project. So staff would recommend approval. With this, we do have a public hearing, which will, can hear comments.
We've heard the discussion from staff on this. We'll now open a public hearing for anyone who wants to talk about this matter. The hearing will open at 7:05. If you have any comments or questions, please come up to the microphone and sign in and state your question or comment. Looks like we have no one here to speak, so I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is closed at 7:06. Now it's time for council discussion. Does any of the council have questions or comments for Troy?
My question I had was, did we have an idea when we expect to see the actual site plan that will be submitted?
Right now, they're in a due diligence period, and so getting all their approvals and tax increment financing approved, once they have that, they will begin the more in-depth design work, and that's, once the plan, the designs are done, that's when it's submitted to the city for us to review. And Chad, banking is here if you have any questions of the developer as well.
Guess we have an idea on roughly when, how long it usually would take?
Assuming that everything goes as planned tonight, we would engage the architect tomorrow to come up with a more specific plan. You know, we've done complexes like this before, so it wouldn't be long at all if we can't give you a specific, but we're going to turn it as quickly as possible as our due diligence period comes to an end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have two resolutions on the floor. The first is Resolution 17-17. Is any more discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve Resolution 17-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The second one is Resolution 18-17, to approve the incremental, increment financing district and the use of tax increment financing. What is the council's wishes on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck on your project. Next item is the mayor. You have some business for us tonight.
I do. First of all, I received a letter of resignation from Don Johnson from the Human Rights Commission, and so I would ask the city council for a motion to approve his resignation.
Do I hear a motion by Brent? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Voss.
Yes, sir.
To accept the resignation of Don Johnson.
Don Johnson, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And we have a member that's going to replace Don, and he just walked in, so Dave, I'll have you come up. Look for a motion from the city council to accept Dave Emanuelson for the human resignation.
Motion.
Motion by Nate to approve Mr. Emanuelson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Emanuelson, you're in the mayor's hands now.
Dave, put your right hand, we can have a reading. Aye.
Aye.
David Emanuelson.
David Emanuelson.
Resolutely swear the support of the Constitution of the United States.
Please, I swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the Human Rights Commission.
The duties of the, the duties of the Office of the Human Rights Commission.
Of the city of Oatana.
Of the city of Oatana.
For which I have been appointed.
For which I have been appointed.
For the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
For the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
Dave, welcome forth, thank you very much for saying yes, sir.
And thank you for the opportunity.
And that's it. And this is my end of the day. And the next item would be a proclamation, and the proclamation is for Women of Achievement, which the banquet was last Friday night. Proclamation reads, "Since 1919, the Business and Professional Women's Organization of Oatana has been building women's careers and skills by holding legislative forums, providing scholarships, organizing skill workshops, supporting domestic violence prevention services, and building public issues awareness through the media. And whereas, the Business and Professional Women's Organization promotes assistance to others in their careers, volunteer and professional organizations, and have leadership roles within the community. And whereas, women own businesses that count for over one-third of all firms in the county, country, and provide employment for one out of every four U.S. workers. And whereas, the 2017 nominees for Oatana Women of Achievement are Linda Hoffman, Sherry Craig, Amy Ledoux, Kellyanna Moore, and Kim Soften-Burrell. Now therefore, I, Thomas A. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Oatana, hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as Business and Professional Women's Month in Oatana, and I urge all citizens in Oatana to join in this salute to working women by celebrating the contributions and achievements of business and professional women in our city, state, and unit. Here into testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to seal the City of Oatana to be affixed." And the winner on Friday night was Sherry Craig from Bloomingdale's.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Well, we'll go to Vice President Rainey to read the finance report.
Expenditures tonight are $205,761. We add on to that the HRA Section 8 payments of $74,579. Total expenditures for tonight, for approval, $280,340.52.
Thank you, Kevin. I look for a motion to approve the finance report.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Doc to approve the finance report. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we go to the consent agenda, that is, items put together before the meeting for the council to review, they include minutes, permits, licenses, other boards and commission reports, monthly reports, contracts and agreements, miscellaneous items. We put them all together for one motion. So what are the council's wishes on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Jeff to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we go on to action items. The first one is item 3.1.1, the food and beverage services at Brooktree Golf Course Agreement with Masters Bar and Grill, and we're going to go to Corky about on this one.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We're very happy to be here tonight, and Mark and Stacy Wilson are here as well, and as your background information was given to you, Tim Cochran ran Masters Bar and Grill last year for us at Brooktree and has sold the business to Mark and Stacy Wilson. And the only changes in the lease, the previous lease, is that we've did a two-year contract. We changed the required hours on opening and, and the timeline for paying rent to allow more staff time with that, too, was for our advantage there, to get more staff time to get the payments in correctly according to the contract. And so with that, we're here recommending to enter into a two-year agreement with Mark and Stacy Wilson to operate Masters Bar and Grill at Brooktree.
Mark or Stacy, do you have anything you'd like to say before we vote on this?
Good evening. We just think that Oatana is a great community to invest in, and we're willing to make that investment and to continue to grow with the city and run the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions of Mark while he's here?
Is it something, Mark, you're going to have hands on, or you've got your plate pretty full right now with the?
My wife will primarily run the bagel shop, I'll still be involved with that, but I'll definitely be at the golf course for most of my time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, we have this on the table. What are the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve this contract. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck to you, the two of you, we look forward to it. Okay, well, we're still on Masters Bar and Grill. Item 3.2.1 is the on-sale liquor license. And Chris, are you?
Sure.
Do you hear this one?
Yeah, this would be to approve Mark Wilson's license to do business as Masters Bar and Grill for on-sale liquor license. They have passed a background check, we have their insurance is in hand, right?
No, the insurance is pending.
The insurance is pending, but he has filled out the application. Staff would recommend approval of the license contingent upon the necessary insurance information.
Okay. Any questions of Chris on this matter?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck again. Okay, now we're on to 3.3 ordinances. The first one is 3.3.1, the second reading of proposed ordinance 1-17 to amend Section 157.053 off-street parking requirements. We'll go to Troy for this one.
Okay, at the last city council meeting, we had the first reading of an ordinance change to amend the off-street parking requirements for multifamily dwellings. Currently, the requirement is two spaces for every unit within a multifamily dwelling. The new proposed ordinance would change that to only require one parking stall for studio and one-bedroom apartments, and then two bedrooms or greater would all require two stalls for parking. And this did get approved by Planning Commission, and again, was a recommended approval from the city council, the first reading at the last meeting, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Troy. Any, any questions of Troy? There be none? Looking for a motion, I guess?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve ordinance 1-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? There be none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. Okay, that, that's a second reading, so this will take effect once it's published, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Next one is 3.3.2, the second reading of proposed ordinance 2-17, Z-332, to amend Section 157, rezone the property at 201 18th Street Southwest, and back to Troy.
This is a rezoning request that, again, at the last meeting, got the first reading. It's changing the zoning from an R4 townhome district to an R6 high-density residential district. This did go to Planning Commission and recommended approval. At the last council meeting, we had a number of comments from the neighbors on this property, but the city council did recommend approval for that first reading. At that time, the developer did explain a little bit more in detail the landscaping that would be required along that south side against the neighbors, and also was, was talking about closing off that Second Avenue access to general traffic, and although we do need to do the more detailed design work on that and have that reviewed, I think the intention would be that general traffic would not come in and out off of Second Avenue. If we have to provide a means in which we provide safety for fire, police, we'll, we'll look at how to do that without providing access to the general public. So with that, the staff would recommend approval of the second reading of the zone change.
Any questions of Troy on this matter? There be none, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance.
Motion by Brent to approve ordinance 2-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, I'd look for a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Motion carries. And this, again, will take effect after it's been published. Thank you, everyone. Next items are resolutions. The first one is Resolution 15-17, authorized advertisement for bids for the 2017 LaMond Road Project. And we'll go to the city engineer Kyle for this.
Good evening. This is a resolution authorizing engineering to advertise for bids for the 2017 LaMond Road Project. Project is estimated to cost a little over 1.4 million. We would be looking at a bid date of March 29th, and looking for approval.
Any questions of Kyle on the LaMond Road Project?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. This has been a long time coming. Any further com, any further questions of Kyle? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, 3.4.2, is Resolution 16-17, authorized advertisement for bids of 2017 North Cedar Avenue Project, and back to Kyle.
So this is a second of our state aid projects for this year. This would be North Cedar Avenue from Fremont Street to North Street. We began the planning of this project with the reconstruction of the North Street intersection last year. Estimated cost of about 1.2 million for this, and it will be reconstructed in concrete, and again, the bid date will be on March 29th. We are doing different times, we're going to try that this year. In the past, we've just selected 10 o'clock and we opened all of the bids at once. We are looking at doing this one at 2:00 P.M., and the other one at 10:00 A.M., to give the contractors a little bit of a chance to adjust their bids should they be successful or unsuccessful in the first bid, so going to try something a little different.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Voss. Any further discussion? I do have one question, Kyle, of course, I have to ask, have we heard anything from the railroad?
We've had discussions with them, but it's usually a long process.
I won't forget, I'll keep asking, so.
Please do, and, and we, you know, sometimes we get frustrated and maybe don't follow up as quick as we should, but we'll, we'll stay on them.
One quick question, did we have any follow-up with the EPA on the, on the drill sites that they had there as far as the underground contamination?
So we are registered with the Minnesota Petro Fund, and if any contamination is encountered, we will be eligible for Petro Fund dollars to remediate any, any soils that are encountered, so, thank you.
Any further? Do you have a motion on the table? No more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.4.3, Resolution 19-17, authorize the outdoor recreation grant application for the Lincoln Tennis Court Project. Corky, would you like to talk about this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Or MJ, or MJ? Both of you?
So you approved the process to apply for the grant at a previous meeting. MJ does all the grant work for this and found out what resolution was needed in this grant process.
The DNR changed their process a little bit. Before, if we were awarded the grant, that's when we had to have the resolution accepting the grant and confirming the maintenance of the area for so long. Now they want that resolution up front, so the grant hasn't changed any from what was presented, I think, a month or so ago to you. We do have the amount of the grant award close in proximity that we didn't have before. I think that's like $45,000, and then we would have some in-kind matching and CIP funds for that, but really, it's, the DNR just changed their system of getting the resolution ahead of time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Corky or MJ? Okay, thank you.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 19-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is 3.4.4, Resolution 20-17, deem parcels occupied by structurally substandard buildings at 116 and 128 East Pearl Street, and back to Troy for this one.
The Oatana Economic Development Authority has purchased the properties at 116, 122, and 128 East Pearl for the purposes of redeveloping those properties. It's been determined that the properties at 116 and 128 do need to be demolished. The property in between those two, 122, is currently being rented and will continue to until we have a redevelopment project. It's anticipated that tax increment financing would be used to repay the city for some of the costs associated with the redevelopment in order to demolish these two properties now and still be eligible for tax increment financing. We must pass a resolution that's attached to the, your staff memo there. It declares properties are substandard and therefore eligible for redevelopment tax financing districts. There's no costs to the city at this point. There would be consulting fees to establish a TIF district, which would be paid for typically by the EDA at the time a project is, is ready for these properties. So staff would recommend approval of the, establishing these properties, 116 and 128 East Pearl, as substandard and therefore eligible for redevelopment tax increment financing district.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy on this matter?
Troy, what's the amount of rent we obtained from 122 East Pearl?
Um, I think it's around $1,000 a month.
And is that a two-bedroom house or three? I don't recall.
I believe it's a three.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve Resolution 20-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next is item 3.5, or no, we don't have any of those, 3.6 miscellaneous items. First one is 3.6.1, tobacco-free grounds policy for the Oatana Library. We're going to go to Lynn on this one.
All right. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the tobacco-free grounds policy for the Oatana Public Library. The Oatana Public Library is committed to providing a safe and healthy environment, and we want all patrons, children, and adults at the library to be in a safe and positive environment. The library staff and library board are recommending the Oatana Public Library to go tobacco-free, and there is no budget impact. I'm going forward with a grant to purchase the signs, and the grant is through Association for Nonsmokers, Minnesota, so our recommendation is to approve the tobacco-free grounds policy at the library.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. We had a study session on this before the meeting. Are there any further questions of Lynn about this matter? There be none, what are the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff Okaberg to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck on that. Next item is 3.6.2, approval of demolition quotes. We'll go to Troy on that.
So with the two properties that were previously mentioned for demolition, 116 and 128 East Pearl, we do have two properties that we purchased last year, 2662 and 2668, 24th Avenue Northeast. Those were purchased for the future location of a fire substation. The fire department did do a burn of most of those properties. There still needs to be demolition of the remains, so there's a garage there that needs to be removed, and then a removal of the foundation and septic systems. And so those were incorporated into a quote with the two Pearl Street houses. We did send out an invitation for quotations on February 7th and received them back on February 28th. The invitations were sent to six local contractors that have performed demolition work within the city or have expressed interest previously. With you, you have a summary of what has been submitted by those quotes. The work for the demolition would be required to be completed by April 20th, and we have provisions in there that would allow for an extension due to weather. So we did receive five quotes, with the lowest quote coming from James Brothers Construction for $46,550. The cost for the Pearl Street houses would be paid for from the EDA, and again, that would be intended to be reimbursed through a redevelopment project utilizing tax increment financing. The 24th Avenue properties would come from city reserves designated for the future substation, which we've utilized those funds to purchase those properties already. So staff would recommend approval of the quote from James Brothers Construction for the demolition of the, of the structures.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy? Any questions of Troy? I do have one. This bid package is put out, if you take all four buildings down, not individually, the quote.
Right, we packaged four together in an attempt to get a lower bid price than to do it individually.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions of Troy? What are the council's wishes on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve the demolition, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that takes care of the action items tonight. Now is the time for public comments. Anyone who's here in the audience is welcome to come up to the microphone and talk about any item not on the agenda. We please ask that you limit your comments to two minutes.
Sorry, Nate, I forgot my stamp. Oh, no.
Where's your stamp, Roger?
Maybe I need to tether that to the desk there, it's with a cable, so it stays there.
That's an idea.
I just wanted to call attention to the council here. They got Minneapolis Star Tribune article, 1st of January. It's roads put on, this is from Minneapolis Star Tribune, roads put on low-salt regime, which brought the question to my mind, the City of Oatana roads on a low-salt regime. That's something that they should hand off to the administrator. Interesting article about what all the salt has been doing. I've seen a lot of people dumping salt on their sidewalks this winter, and I've shared my low-salt regime with them on an individual basis. You mix salt, half and half, with traction grit, and you use sparingly with a big salt shaker, like they sell the salt in. Also, I've got, I think I sent every one of you guys an email here, Education Powered by the Sun. It's a public forum in Mankato this Friday. And why am I telling the city council about this public forum? By now, the Red Wing School District is close to net-zeroing out its electricity use and earning some money to aid the budget because of its renewable energy projects. I welcome anybody to join me. But the thing about it is, is I've actually asked the mayor some time ago about how come we've got this huge complex, office complex here, and how come we don't have combined heat and power? You don't know what combined heat and power is? Join me on Friday, and I'll explain it to you, a little bit of adult education. But anyway, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Roger. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? There being no one, we'll go to council comments, and we'll start off with, Dave, you're up first tonight.
Nothing to add tonight from Ward 3.
Everything's wonderful in Ward 3.
Oh, par, yeah, gonna get new streets this year, it's going good.
Kevin?
Yeah, I do have one question, Kyle, Chris. With the alleyway being reconstructed behind the Salvation Army Godfathers, I'm a little concerned in regards to getting higher traffic volumes on Second. I know we discussed traffic volumes last meeting, and I wasn't really thinking about the construction of the alleyway. If we can address that, especially with large trucks using that rather than the alleyway, I would really appreciate that, if we could do something to help the neighbors out on that.
We'll look into that for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Brent?
Nothing this evening.
Doug?
No, thank you.
Jeff?
Nothing tonight.
Nate?
I will make one comment. Brent, the mayor, and I, anybody else? I can't speak for you guys, but I was making a fool of myself playing basketball on March 18th, 2:00 p.m. At, is it at the high school?
High school, I think Doug's joining us too, I believe, right?
Oh, Doug's going to be there too, yeah. He's on the opposing team, so we're going to be Doug.
I thought it was a hockey game. What's hockey?
So if you want to come see us make fools of ourselves at 2:00 on March 18th.
What's the occasion?
It's the...
Hospice House.
Hospice House.
Yes, the Hospice House. I've got the one email in front of me, not...
Sign me up to watch, yes. Mayor?
Just congratulations, Mark and Stacy. I look forward to coming down there and having a great burger and a beer and enjoying your company, so, thanks for taking that challenge on.
Chris?
Nothing.
Nothing, wow, everything's gone well tonight. Now, Aaron, you're here tonight also. Do you have any good words of wisdom for us?
No, I've got nothing.
You've got nothing to...
Next meeting, you have to have something.
We expect to be, we want an update on the high school, so...
Hey, I was sure you were going to say something about the state champions.
We only have one state champ.
And fifth. Took fifth as a team, gymnastics, we've got a third, so, yeah. High school did well this last weekend.
High school did well this past week, so... I guess that's it for tonight, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn, second.
Second.
Second by Nate. Any discussion on that? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being closed.